Today, please turn on your phones. Welcome to the May 21st, 2025 regular meeting of Eureka Springs Historic District Commission. I am your chair, Commissioner and President, I am Maggie Mae Christine S. Frank Green, Susan Daniel Debbie Davis. We perform our business. The Eureka Springs Historic Commission is in配套的Eureka Springs Municipal Code to issue a certificate of appropriateness for alterations to exterior architectural features, demolition, and new construction within the values of Eureka Springs Historic District. The HDC uses Eureka Springs Historic District Guidelines and the U.S. Department of Interior standards for the rehabilitation of historic buildings as the basis for our decisions. The commission can make the following actions on an application. Approval, approval with modifications, the 9100 program for more information. Appeal of an island made circuit court. Public comments will be heard on each agenda item as it is called. Other public comments will be heard during the public comment period. We have no old business, new business. Level two, 186 Spring, Christine Daniels applicant. Install concrete wheelchair access ramp on southern most door in front of building. Level two, one Frisco Judy Holden owner, modify metal carport for adding OSB siding. Level one, 16 Nut Linda Mayner owner, add fiber cement hardy board to bottom structure to the building. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda or any third implications?
I move we accept the agenda.
I'll second it.
Christine made a motion. Susan seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. A criminal expectations does not excuse applicants owner or agent from compliance with any other applicable codes, ordinances, or policies of the city of Eureka Springs. I'd like to start by reviewing the purpose of the HDC. We are only here to approve applications based on exterior architectural features. So having our data, and then itself, I would remind commissioners, we do not consider the following things are not unperceived or unfair statements, which include size of a structure, set nature of structure, parking, numbered units, how a building material will be disposed, drainage, sewer, sewer line, passing, putting near painting walls, and lenses. This is on application. Discussing these types of issues only confuses the public in the thing that we have jurisdiction over these types of issues, including now. Most of this is up to the city building inspector, fine city officials. Also remind your new residential structures do not go to the planning division unless they were asked to be in order of Eureka's. Do we have anyone here for 186 Spring? Is this the Eureka Springs Library or applicant at the same construction date 1950? And we have our building inspector representative tonight on the state of the game. Any questions?
Yes, well, so this is an outstanding experience. I think Christine did an honorable by her review. She did not make it tonight, so I'm here speaking.
Okay. Frank's gonna write, read you the summary of facts presented on the application.
It's a concrete ramp on the southern most door. Bradley will be painted metal, color will be black, and the color of the water is going to be red.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Eureka Springs Historic District Commission issue a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed work at 186 Spring based upon the agreement upon summary of facts as presented.
Second. Do we have discussion or questions at all? Susan made the motion, Christine seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion here is silent. Next, we have one Frisco Judy Holden applicant saying, construction date 1920. The building is 1915. Stuff of course modified metal carport with OSB siding. Let's hear it for this. Would you read the summary of facts for?
Yes, install OSB siding on metal carport.
And do I have a motion, please?
I move that the Eureka Springs Historic District Commission issue a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed work at one Frisco based on the agreement upon summary of facts as presented.
Second. Discussion, questions, guys?
I'm not in favor of this. I think that this is a contributing structure. It just opens the door to more of these in the historic district.
Do you want to put that up?
I understand that. But given the fact that the owner is very familiar with the HDC guidelines because she served on the commission for several years, I think that she would understand that that's not a permitted structure.
Didn't she put that up after our visit?
Yes.
To the house being torn down nearby? I think she did too.
What kind of siding was the post that applicant ordered?
Cedar, cedar or pine.
Yeah, but...
But we did that in case, but this is all a case by accident.
Well, and that was not a contributing home. It's in the district, but it was a newer home. This is a contributing structure in the historic district. You know, what's to prevent anyone from coming and putting one of these in any yard in our historic district? It's, I just think that we have to draw a line somewhere.
Do you want to go on with this? But they did come to waste that all in the form?
I'm not going to be a part of it.
You guys want to go ahead and go?
Can't leave alone, even though the applicant's not...
Okay, I'm clear tonight. I'm just asking what you guys want to do.
I'm ready to go.
Okay. Susan made the motion, Christine seconded. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no.
No.
No. Maggie? Christine?
No.
Sorry. Susan?
No.
Frank? Motion is denied by the C.O.A. Susan, level one, brought to the honor Linda Mayner, applicant saying, construction date is 1965, it is not contributing. This add fiber cement siding around base of the structure to migrate, no water issue, replace board and batt siding with wood for... And she's here by Zoom.
Oh, that's right.
Linda, do you hear us?
Yes, like it's hard to hear, but I can hear.
I wouldn't hear. We can't hear.
We hear you all here.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you Linda, but they can't.
Who's that guy?
Oh, okay. I'm here. I don't know that you guys can hear me though, but I am here.
If you can, just say your address, name, and address. Do you hear me?
I can hear you, but it sounds like you're like from a distance, but I can, I can hear you.
I'll just do it for you. Your name's Linda Mayner, and you live at 16 Nut?
Yes.
Okay. Frank, please second the summary of facts on the application.
Add fiber cement siding around base of structure and replace board and batt siding with wood and batt siding.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so the, we're replacing the wood that was rotted, without the same wood, but with the bottom part of it, it's going to be the hardy board going vertical.
Going horizontal.
Horizontal.
I'm sorry, going horizontal, I apologize.
No, now you're here, you go ahead. Linda?
Okay. So we're replacing the rotted wood on the house?
Yes.
And the bottom part that is currently the wood, we're going to have that go horizontally with the hardy board.
Okay, just a moment. But the summary of facts that Frank read, is that correct?
The summary of what? I'm sorry.
Facts that were done for application, is that correct? Does that cover to get a motion here before we can move on?
I just having trouble hearing that last part.
Okay, Frank, so reread it.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Fiber cement siding around base of the structure and replace board and batt siding with wood and batt siding. Is that right?
I'm just having trouble hearing what you're saying.
I'm having a little trouble too.
It just sounds like there's an echo and it's just hard to hear.
So here's the summary of facts. Add fiber cement siding around base of the structure, replace board and batt siding with wood and board and batt siding. Is that correct for them?
Yes, it sounds correct, yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Eureka Springs Historic District Commission issue a certificate for appropriateness for the proposed work at 16 Nut based on the agree upon summary of facts as presented.
Have a second. Second. Okay. Questions for Linda?
What should go on?
Questions for discussion?
Where is not, I'm not familiar with that.
Down the street.
Down the street. That's where it also goes back.
Okay.
It changes names.
Yeah, about three times. I've just never seen that before.
Linda ran away. We didn't know that. I mean, we've discussed her ourselves. If you have questions, she gets back.
She's replacing the board and batt? Just at the bottom.
With wood board and batt.
And we allow this flat, um, to pour in the water, so I just don't need it, which should be around a four foot or so.
Right. I do wish the painters would be more careful about overspray on that rock foundation.
And since she's not here, we may have to see if I can get positive of mine to make sure Linda understands this.
Well, this structure looks freshly painted. With all the overspray and everything.
Yes, she has seen a COA, we have been approved, so we're just talking wood and paint, and then wanted to make some changes, hoping for them to have a way around the section to replace the sections, that's why I agree with it.
She's been here before, it's us.
No, she's content agenda.
I thought nothing was new. I thought around just being...
Are we getting for that?
Yes.
Well, did you guys have any questions on her?
No. It, it looks okay the way that they're doing, I mean, yeah, it looks appropriate. So we don't have questions for her.
Susan made the motion, Christine seconded.
Is she just, is she gonna do all this up and down stuff, or is it just going to be all horizontal, or is it?
No, no, she's just, she's just making a splash zone with the hardy board at the bottom, if you read it. She's just doing that part. Some of the work has already been done.
Looks like two or three people.
Well...
Usually around four.
Looks like, looks like two courses of hardy board and then the board and batt.
Yeah.
I really like the board and batt.
Yeah.
Yes. It breaks up the wall.
And I know you're down, you don't miss the fourth building down Main Street, that's one of those mine, but we have left them here, just to say that. Susan made the motion, Christine seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion here is silent.
Congratulations, Linda. Bless her heart.
We have noticed that items have been received with approvals by the stewardship preservation officer. Minor impact projects include ordinary maintenance that involve changing materials, newer replacement siding. Alterations to non-communicating or non-historic structures excluding major additions or demolition, minimum impact projects that be designed. We can add A to, they are all on our website. Okay, mention our business. We're going to meet the building inspector, Paul.
Cassie? You might tell him if he gets right.
I don't know.
Here we go. There we go.
Sorry, we lost you. They can take a vote while that happened, and your application...
Oh, there we go.
So I will be at COA tomorrow morning.
Doesn't have to be green? Now talk.
Can you guys hear us now?
Yes.
Now talk. No. The box has got to be green, I believe.
It switches when she talks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Amanda?
I, I can hear my, I can...
We pass...
Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Pass by the C.O.A. Cassie will send her COA out tomorrow morning.
She can't hear you.
Are we connected to everyone?
I can hear you guys.
Now you don't. She can hear us.
Do you hear us now?
I can hear you, yes.
Your application was approved.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for bearing with us.
Thank y'all.
No problem.
Thanks. Okay, Paul.
Good evening. I was asked to come here to be introduced to you. Excuse me, my name's, hang on. Sorry about that. My name's Paul Sutherland, and I was approved last week to be the new building inspector. I probably have about 37 years of being a general contractor. And a couple of years, about a year ago, my brother retired and my main superintendent retired, so this came up and I felt like I could help the city out by being the building inspector. And I've been on it for probably seven months maybe. And working with Cassie, probably, I think Cassie came in maybe a week or two after I was hired on, and I thoroughly enjoy working with Cassie.
Questions for Paul? Been here for a long time now, but works...
Yeah, I had a construction company, which is all, but yes, and I, me and my wife have Elmwood House, been had it for about nine years, so, so I've been around for a while, so...
Debbie, you were going to ask?
Well, I think one of my questions that I had was, sometimes it feels like we approve or disapprove something and then we never get any follow-up or hear, you know, was it completed the way it was supposed to be? And I understand you can't be at every meeting, but if you could give some information to Cassie, you know, when you go back and look at these properties to make sure that things were done the right way, I think it would be very beneficial for us to hear that, you know, to know that either people are, you know, doing what we have asked them to do within the guidelines, or they're not.
So several things that Cassie and I have came up with is, like say for instance, you have a new building that HDC and planning has to approve. She's getting us more involved before they approve that, so we can review a little bit, so if we have questions on that too, which we truly appreciate it. I also will pick up Cassie and maybe have her go look at some of these jobs that HDC approved to make sure that she feels comfortable that they've done that job properly too. And, or I'll call her up and ask her, many times she probably gets phone calls, I say, hey, do we got a COA on this job here because there weren't there? And we do, she sends me every meeting's agenda and everything that was approved, so we have in our files, so we can review all that. There are several projects that I, that, you know, maybe I didn't feel like it was complete intent of what you guys approved, so I bring her out there and ask her to do that. So I think that with Jess working with us too, we work really good, all three of us work really good together on asking questions, and I feel like, I don't know how many emails Cassie and I swap every day because of the fact that asking questions are on the same page or something, but I think we do work together really well and be able to, whatever you pass, I think we, we do look at that, so...
I think we got a good group. I met Jessy also. I think they all three were really good together. I stopped in this morning, asked about our meeting and all, something, and they come up, they may handle it all, listening to us and to us. Oh, I'm glad. And, yeah, they, every time I'm on the evening, we've been in Cassie's office, they really do work together really good.
Thank you.
We don't really have separate answers. We want to make sure they're all on the same page, especially before listed any commissions that, you know, people are here for movement, they want to be in the process, know you can be that vice person. And Jess and I have been great service, and we've made that communication attractive that are moving in the future. Because it never feels good to get that call, somebody in something three years ago, why would you stop at night and say, well, it's in the theater, but also all again to them.
Well, our historic nature of our town is the most important thing that we have to safeguard.
Yes.
And I think it's really good that you guys are working together and rely on her expertise because she has the background knowledge, you know, more so than the rest of us do on what is appropriate and what is not.
Right, and Paul's lived here basically for not 10 years. He has to his store abilities, he owns his Santa home. He is working still on the home, you know, who did it there, but he's here, I mean, he actually owns something, so we're not just saying, oh, these are buildings, he's part of us.
So several things that we're going to do in the building department is, and it's going to be probably take place pretty shortly, is we're going to have a code class for general contractors, for people who want to get their general contractor's license, because I'm trying to get more people to get their licenses, and that will probably happen sometime June or July. And we're also, we're doing two classes, one with the floor, like we did, like they did before. So a little bit of background with my background is, our company did a lot of historical restorations like train depots, museums, post offices for, throughout Kansas, Nebraska, and so there's a couple of historical restoration guys here in town who's going to help you with classes, and we're going to, I think we're going to do more of this floor here this year, and then we're going to do maybe a couple of window projects too, to, to help people learn how, how to restore windows, so.
Good.
We're working on that. Get Frankie over there to help us.
No, just thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, just don't hesitate to holler at all offices. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Paul. Okay, update on items from workshop.
So on the second to last page of your packets, I included some numbers. I got some quotes for what printing for your brochures would cost. And I also, depending on how accurate my account is, came up with some numbers for what it will cost to mail, depending on what opportunity we have. Any money spent from our account has to be approved by vote, which is why I want to make sure I know your guys' numbers. You're welcome to it on this night, or if you're going, this is the first time I've seen this, and I'd like to wait a couple of weeks. I totally understand how you do it on this. Our current brochures are all stickered with incorrect websites, so if they're just waiting on, but they're prepaid brochures, they're just waiting on the address that they want them to...
Dee, how much can we spend? I'm not familiar.
What, I'm sorry? We can spend the whole amount, I wonder if it was six weeks ago. Somewhere in there. I can bring it on a brochure system until next week. We have been putting six, seven thousand dollars.
Okay, that's, that could be spent.
This is money somebody left to HDC years ago. Spin it, why, one other lady with stuff, that's time, it's mine, I can have money.
But if we have the prepaid mailed ones, couldn't we just concentrate those on like the contributing structures in Eureka instead of doing it like a mass mailing?
It's up to you guys.
I consider, I don't know how many we have, you know, or how many contributing structures are on our town.
Cassie told us a couple of meetings ago, when you... There's, I believe there's 276 of our brochures that we printed. Want to see them, if I can. I don't know how many we should have.
I'd still like to see them sent to everybody in the historic district. I think that's important, just for awareness. I just hope that people will do more than, oh, you know, toss it, you know, have to read it, and, because it is important.
And these are quotes for 500 brochures or 2,000 brochures. That is printing more than we would need for mailing everyone, we just want to make sure we have extra for, if you have a new town, or just, you know, there was a special about putting them in different offices and stuff, so I want to make sure we have extra.
Yes. Yes. Code from you.
How many will we have left over after the mailing?
Right now, the only ones that we have?
No, the, the no ones.
We haven't decided how many to print.
Yeah, well, how many, literally, we mailed to everybody.
Do that.
Yeah.
preservation, we also require local...
Okay, how are, how are we, with the little rock? We may be able to strip their own sunpits, we can be strict, we can...
It was interesting, we were in Mackinac Island last week and they have very strict guidelines there as far as their historic preservation and I was able to talk to some local people who were involved in that and they were upset because they were changed or they couldn't dictate paint colors anymore. And, and they had had some pretty strict guidelines on paint colors before that and I said, well, it's kind of a, you know, national change, so, but it was interesting to talk to some preservation people from a whole different state, but they're doing some wonderful work there too. Yeah, yeah.
Approval minutes from April sixteen for human meeting. Motion?
So moved.
Second? Maggie made the motion, Susan seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we agree.
I'm gonna choose myself.
I want to, Christine wasn't... Susan, you have an aye. So four zero. Any others? It's all four, it's voting yes. Okay, next meeting will be June fourth, twenty twenty-five. Level three applications due Thursday, May twenty-second. Level two applications due Thursday, May twenty-eighth. Agenda setting for June fourth. They want to cut on the other difference? Have a comment, have no, more? Commissioner, Maggie, or Debbie?
I know, you looked right at me. No, I don't have...
Maggie? Susan?
Alumni banquet this weekend, try and come.
Four.
People that are going to wait. Eureka Springs High School, Highlanders.
You don't have anything? Just thanks everybody for coming and participating and having a good holiday weekend, everybody. Hopefully we can have some dry weather for the weekend, but, I love this, these trees are growing nice.
I don't, I don't think it's going to be dry.
Still have a vacancy on the surface restriction, if anyone would like to apply, you got a vacancy office and, if anyone didn't know, my days were more, they can see offices.
Yeah, how that did.
Enjoy.
So moved.
Second? You seconded, Maggie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any others? Five zero zero.